Go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Torrington City Council. This is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. We have Ryan Cate here from the local radio stations, K E R M and K G U S Radio. This meeting is being broadcast live on the radio stations and also on YouTube, and it will be up permanently on YouTube. We also have Ms. Jess Oaks here from the Torrington Telegram. Welcome to the press. Good evening and welcome to all. This evening, our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm asking Councilman Shane Victorin to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda are the mayor's informational items. Tonight, mayor and council will consider an ordinance on first reading related to traditional bicycles, scooters, and skateboards, and the new electrical bicycles and powered scooters that we see everywhere these days. Council is charged by law to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Torrington citizens and visitors to our city. This duty of mayor and council is the reason we are tonight considering the new bike, e-bike, scooter ordinance on first reading. New technology seems to continue unabated, and council seeks to do its part to make sure these new e-bikes and scooters are being used in a safe manner. Over the last several months, the mayor, councilman, and police department have heard from citizens expressing concern for the safety of children now using the e-bikes and scooters. Some concerns are e-bikes and scooters running stop signs, emerging unexpectedly from alleyways, and endangering pedestrian traffic on sidewalks and pathways. The best solution is always self-governance, and parental care, concern, and control over their children's use of these vehicles. But, a new revised ordinance is also necessary. Please use the e-bikes and scooters safely and considerately, and there will be no need for negative interaction with the local authorities. But again, council does need to reorganize and update our ordinances to deal with this new issue. Please continue to enjoy the beautiful fall weather as we work our way toward the upcoming Thanksgiving and Christmas seasons. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the 10:21:25 council meeting as published.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda and the minutes from the 10:21:25 council meeting?
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the consent agenda as presented and approve the 10:21:25 council meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, which includes the 10:21:25 council meeting minutes as published, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved, as are the 10:21:25 council meeting minutes as published. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda itself, and I have a little preface Clerk Treasurer Strecker got a call from Eric Alden's wife. He is not able to come this evening, and they asked to be removed from the agenda. Not sure if they want to get back on the agenda or not at some future date, so that's open question. But we need to take that informational item off of there, as Mr. Alden is unable to attend this evening. But I'd also ask council to consider putting as item number one under action items, this topic of the Agreement for Professional Services, APS, Old Glory Engineering LLC, and you each got a copy of a letter drafted by Jeff Harkins, the Director of Public Works, relating to engineering, providing inspection, documentation, and reporting for FY26 sewer and manhole lining improvements. So, if I would like to see a motion to take off item number one and then add item number one under action items relating to the Agreement for Professional Services with Old Glory Engineering LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the amendment as presented and described. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was a tie three ways. I'll go with Councilman Warren, seconded on that. Do we have any further discussion on approving the amended agenda? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of approval of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the amended agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is what we call the public forum, and we have a taker this evening, but I always like to explain this. This is an opportunity, it's for non, for citizens, it's for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker, pardon me, must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for the council to listen. No action will be taken. And we do have a young lady here this evening, CJ Bowle, who wants to speak to us, so you may come up and, and have your two minutes, CJ.
Good evening, City Council, I'm Mayor Dobie. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak. The first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hand this over to you guys and start with question one. Question one. I am with Torrington Main Street. I'm not sure, I know a couple of you know that, but I work with Leanne Mattis, she is our director. We fall under the umbrella of Go-Goshen, and we have an upcoming annual meeting, and I would really love to extend an invitation to you guys to come to our annual meeting. It really opens the door for a lot of networking and also us working together. Go-Goshen and obviously City Council, you know, we work together on many, many items. You know, working together for city ordinances, for whatever the case may be. Obviously, we come to you guys a lot for events and things like that. So, this really, this annual meeting and celebration, I know it says reservation by November 3rd, however, you can ignore that, you guys are more than welcome to come. We will have a no-host cocktail hour and then hors d'oeuvres. There's a presentation by Trenda Weisheitler goes over all of the financials, how things work, and also you get to see community awards get presented to your people. These are people who make a difference in our community, so this is an absolute open invitation. Would love to have you guys there.
All right.
Are there questions? No?
I don't think so. Thank you CJ for the invitation. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
All right. We are on the action items under the amended agenda, and the first item on the agenda is council to consider an Agreement for Professional Services, APS, from Old Glory Engineering LLC, and I would call on Director Public Works, Harkins.
Thank you, mayor and council. As stated, we recommend that council award the APS to Old Glory Engineering from Saratoga, Wyoming, in a not-to-exceed amount of $68,133 for the fiscal year '26 sewer and manhole lining inspection. This APS will provide for the inspection, documentation, and reporting for the fiscal year '26 sewer and manhole lining improvements project that you, the council, awarded on to Insetu Form Technologies of Chesterfield, Missouri on August 19th, 2025, in the amount The request for proposal for the services was advertised on October 15th and 22, 2025. We received two proposals in response to our advertisement on October 29th. The proposals were evaluated by a committee of five individuals from the city of Torrington. After careful consideration of the merits of each proposal, the associated costs, the consensus of the committee was to select Old Glory Engineering's proposal. We provided our recommendation to the W C D A staff, who concurred with the award. Project funding for this will be provided by the same C D B G grant that was funding the sewer and manhole lining improvements project. That C D B G grant was in the amount of $932,171. Council approved $800,000, which included contingency for the project, leaving $132,171 available to fund this APS. Funding was established in the '26 fiscal year budget, under account number 529100. With that being said, I'd be willing to answer any questions?
I just know on an email chain that happened, was it yesterday? I believe, that you dealt with the lady from the C D B G grant entity, and I think you amazed her, Director Harkins, by providing her requested information immediately when she asked for it. And so, it's been run by them and approved by them, and it's covered under the grant, the $68,000 is covered under the grant funding that's already been awarded to us, right?
Yes.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Harkins? And this will speed up the project, right?
I don't think it'll speed up the contract or any, but it'll help the city out as far as being able to provide the, the inspection services that we need. There's a lot of video of the work that the contractor's gonna do that needs to be reviewed, and typically, that's done by either mark or city water department staff, and it takes hours upon hours.
So, that will relieve them from those duties?
Correct.
Provide for this Old Glory Engineering LLC to do all that?
Right.
All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Harkins?
Mr. Mayor, the council may want to know, though, that part of the project, too, is the manhole lining in the corridor going out to the prison, and that is something new that Insetu is doing, so having an engineer on top of that is very important.
And I thank you, Councilman Deal, for that input. And it also, I forget the chemical element, but there's a chemical deterioration of things in those manholes, right? H2S, so?
Yeah, the H2S has been eroding or eating, if you will, the concrete from a lot of those manholes along the prison corridor. And that situation's basically been present since I started working for the city of Torrington. We tried to get the Department of Corrections to pay for that initially. We were unsuccessful in getting that done, so with the C D B G grant, we get, we'll be able to get that remedied at basically no cost to the city.
And that lining should, it's resistant to that chemical, right?
Correct. It'll seal up all the concrete.
Concrete isn't resistant to it?
No.
If there aren't any further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the Agreement for Professional Services with Old Glory Engineering.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion?
I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the Agreement for Professional Services, APS, for Old Glory Engineering, and amended item number one as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second from Councilman Victorin. All right, any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the Agreement for Professional Services, APS, with Old Glory Engineering, as set forth in item one of the amended agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that agreement is approved. Thank you, Mr. Harkins. All right, we are on item number two, mayor's appointments. These are for the Health Insurance Committee. Donald Kearns, who is Streets and Sanitation, to fill a spot, and Michael Schuler from the Electrical Department to fill a spot, two vacant spots, and then that will make a full Health Insurance Committee. If anybody has any questions, I would entertain them.
Are these nominees filling vacancies by retirees?
One is a retiree, and one is a person who no longer is employed at the city.
Okay.
And then we'll have a full Health Insurance Committee, if the, if the council approves these two appointments. And that's, Don Kearns works out at Streets and Sanitation, or works for Streets and Sanitation, and Michael Schuler works for the Electric Department.
There's no inquiry or questions, Mr. Mayor would move to approve the appointments as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the Health Insurance Committee appointments as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the Health Insurance appointments as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those two appointments are approved by council. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on our agenda this evening is ordinance on first reading relating to human-powered scooters, skateboards, electric bicycles, powered scooters, and I would ask Mr. Eddington to please read the ordinance by title.
It's an ordinance amended and reenacting section 10.36.010, 10.36.020, 10.36.030, and section 12.16.020 of the Torrington Municipal Code, and creating and enacting 10.36.040 and 10.36.050 of the Torrington Municipal Code, 2025 revisions relating to the regulation of bicycles, human-powered scooters, skateboards, electric bicycles, powered scooters.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eddington, and I would first call on Chief of Police, Matt Johnson.
Thank you, mayor and council. As evidenced by the length of reading that Mr. Eddington had to complete in order to introduce this, it has been a little bit of an adventure in terms of making some changes to ordinance and creating some new ordinances. There's a lot that we tackled in this, and I thought it kind of might make sense to break it down based on what we had talked about in the work session in terms of our big objectives, and then lay out some of the important changes that we would want you to consider as part of this discussion. So, I guess the first thing that I wanted to note was the big loophole that existed under statute related to enforcement for powered scooters or the electric scooters, where they were classified as a motorized skateboard, which doesn't fit any of the enforcement applications that we have by statute or ordinance. That was remedied under the proposed ordinance for 1036.020, under paragraph one, which specifically incorporates the powered scooters as enforceable under our ordinance, and they are applicable for any state law or municipal ordinance that would apply. And I, feel free to throw something at me if you have questions at any point along on this, otherwise, I'll just kind of keep going. The other thing that we had pointed out, and we knew needed to be remedied, was that our ordinances under 1036.010 and 1216.020, related to riding bicycles, scooters, et cetera, on the sidewalk, were not in alignment, and in fact, were contradictory. So, we were able to address that, and the way that we did that was we really covered everything under 10, under the 1036 chapter, and then chapter 12 just essentially points everything back to 1036, with the exception of adding in a caveat for operating a human-powered device or a, I'm sorry, not a human-powered device, a pedestrian vehicle for a person with a disability. So, that it really simplified that, and all enforcement and definitions and everything else are incorporated under 1036. The next issue that popped up that we needed to remedy was that we had under 1036.030, an unused requirement for bicycles to be registered that had not been done in decades and that we didn't have the resources to complete. 1036 was, that requirement was completely removed, and 1036.030 was repurposed as part of the change for the ordinance. We also had a request from council to look at helmet use for juveniles, especially while operating some higher-risk devices. We specifically pointed that in the direction of the e-bikes and the e-scooters, just because they have performance capabilities that are significantly beyond what a regular bicycle, skateboard, scooter would have, and that was created under 1036.030. So, as proposed, helmet use would be compulsory for anybody under 16 riding an e-bike or an e-scooter, or, I'm sorry, a powered scooter. And then, kind of that final piece was looking at a juvenile status and for offense option that would allow us to try to change behavior without being quite so punitive in the world of fines, if you will. We created that under 1036.050. It essentially provides officers with the discretion to cite a person under 16 who is in violation of anything under the chapter with basically a $25 fine, rather than whatever the, I mean, that could go up to 750 under the general enforcement provisions of 1036.040. The requirement is that it requires the parent and child to appear in the municipal court to discuss safe riding practices with the judge, and hopefully create an impact there that would permanently change behavior and, and not have unsafe conditions or diminish unsafe conditions. And then, an important caveat with that is that if that citation was issued related to helmet use, if the guardians needed to buy a helmet for the kiddo in order to comply, the purchase of that helmet would apply to the $25 fee for the court. So, they could appear in court, show the receipt for the $25, or whatever the helmet purchase was, and then demonstrate that they have the helmet, and that that could count in the court towards the payment of that $25 fee. So, again, we're just really trying to push that towards, we want kiddos to be safe, we want to change behavior, we want them to have helmets, and we're not interested in that being a revenue generating or a heavily punitive consequence. That really is kind of the big ones that we had from the work session, and if you don't have any questions on those, I'll dive into the, some of the other considerations for your review. So, I guess one of the things we wanted to point out was that we made some pretty significant adjustments toward, for lack of anything better, I've calling it the dismount zone. I had a far more convoluted description at first, and for, for the sake of simplicity, we changed that to just be the dismount zone. When we first started on this, there were prohibitions for bicycle or other human-powered traffic, all up and down Highway 26, all up and down Highway 85. There was quite a bit, I think it was 21st Avenue, that started like on East, East B Street, and I think went all the way to West C. It was fairly extensive, and as our team looked at that, we really don't see a lot of purpose for some of those, I mean, especially like Highway 85 south of 26, and Highway 26 to either end of the city limit. If a person's operating a bicycle or skateboard or anything else lawful on the sidewalk, I don't see that that's a big imposition on pedestrian safety. I don't see any reason that we would need to prohibit that, and certainly, Highway 85, especially incorporating now that the overpass is there, which I don't believe was when this ordinance was originally constructed, it seems pointless to add that in, in terms of a restriction. The only place we really saw the need for restrictions is in our downtown area where we have pedestrians exiting directly out onto the sidewalk, or where we have higher levels of pedestrian density that would make that difficult to accommodate either the use of a bicycle or skateboard. So, we really narrowed, narrowed that down quite a bit. It's covered under definitions, which is 1036.010, paragraph five, covered under dismount zone, and it's basically narrowed East A and West A Street from 26th to 22nd Avenue, 19th from Main Street to East A Street, or, I'm sorry, that would be East 19th Avenue, and then 20th Avenue from West A to East A, 21st from West A to East A, 22nd from West A to East A, and then Main Street from Highway 26 to 23rd Avenue. And from our perspective, that, that covered really all of the essential dismount zones that would lend itself to pedestrian safety, but certainly happy to hear any feedback that you folks might have related to that. The next thing that we kind of looked at was the operation of bicycles and scooters on sidewalks, outside of the dismount zone, obviously, and then the Torrington walking path. Some of the feedback that we heard and saw on that, we originally had a prohibition of any bicycle operation on the sidewalk, and when you look at that, especially for younger kiddos, that's a safe place for kids to learn how to ride a bicycle. And from a human-powered scooter standpoint, it's really not unsafe for kids to run a kick scooter on the sidewalk in our community, especially in residential areas. And so, what we felt like made a reasonable compromise in terms of safety was allowing any human-powered scooter, any human-powered skateboard, any human-powered bicycle, up to a Class 1 electric bike, which is a bike that maxes out at 21 mile, excuse me, 20 miles per hour, as long as it's being actively pedaled, that that, those should be able to be safely operated on the sidewalk. We did exclude Class 2 electric bikes, which can operate almost like a motorcycle up to 20 miles an hour. I mean, you can certainly pedal them, but they are truly self-powered, and some of them can accelerate pretty rapidly up to 20 miles can accelerate pretty rapidly up to 20 miles per hour. And then also the Class 3 bicycles, which do require human propulsion, but they go all the way up to 28 miles per hour, which is, in our view, quite too fast for sidewalk operation. And then the other thing that we excluded was the powered scooters. Some of those have some performance capabilities that are pretty significant, and that lends to not a good mix for pedestrians and powered scooters. So for the sidewalks, we looked at lawful operation of human-powered scooter, human-powered scoot, I mean, anything that qualifies under a human-powered scooter, which includes the skateboards, human-powered bicycles, and Class 1 bicycles, and then Class 2, Class 3, and powered scooters would be prohibited on the sidewalk. The Torrington walking path, we also looked at that, and that is a issue that I want to make sure that you note and consider. One of the things that, well, the Torrington walking path essentially functions the same as the sidewalks, but we added the capability to operate a powered scooter on the Torrington walking path. The framework for that and the thought process for that was, we got some feedback that we felt, there were some folks that felt like that might include a safer option for kiddos who are going to school on either side of town, whether that be the middle school and high school, or our two elementaries, and that gives them kind of a safe, protected path for a lot of kids that are operating a powered scooter heading to school. I've seen some great arguments and ideas for that, and some great arguments and ideas against that. I don't know that I see a compelling burden on either side of it. I think we could do it or not do it with probably equal amounts of benefit and negative. So I put that in there, and I guess I leave it for your consideration, because I don't have a solid opinion on one side or the other. But I think it certainly has the possibility to keep some kids off of traffic, particularly on West 25th, where there is some fairly high levels of vehicle traffic, but it does create some additional issues with kiddos making street crossings at a higher rate of speed, and certainly conflict with pedestrian safety on the walking path. And then a couple of other items that we added in, so this one is addressed under 1036.020, Paragraph 2. Our SROs have found quite a number of e-bikes in particular that are capable of operating at performance levels that are substantially above how the state has classified those. Some of those have even had, you know, like little switches where you can change it from a street legal bike to essentially off-road electric motorcycle at the flip of a switch. It's really confusing for a lot of folks, and really confusing for parents, I think, and difficult to enforce. There are some other statutory aspects that we could utilize to enforce those, but the punishment levels on those, the level of punitive response is pretty high, and so it felt like the better answer to that was to include that in this ordinance and make it enforceable under municipal ordinance. And that would just say that if your e-bike operates, it really applies mainly to the e-bikes, but if your e-bike operates at a performance level that's beyond how it's defined in our ordinance, which is tied to state statute, then that's not lawful to operate on public property. You would need to operate that on private property. And then I guess the last thing, oh, I'm sorry, I did want to add in that we put an exemption in there for first responders. That is becoming something that has some potential significant benefits for us, especially for nighttime patrols in the summer. An e-bike is, has a lot of advantages in terms of really effective patrol, and I know that some EMS folks and even some fire folks are utilizing e-bikes for first responder patrol, and some of those do have performance options in excess of the 750 watt limit. So we added an exclusion in that, but only if operated for duty purpose. It's, does not provide a joyride function in there in addition. And then I guess the last thing, this has been a little bit like opening Pandora's Box, and we find something new to think of every few weeks. But over the last few days, we've heard some feedback about nighttime visibility. That is also something that we could address likely under state statute pretty effectively. But given that we're hearing from parents and from community members that it's hard to track all that down in statute, and it's easier from an enforcement perspective to utilize this municipal ordinance, I am going to recommend that we add an additional section in here under 1036.020. Probably we would bump that in on between Paragraph 3 and Paragraph 4, or 4 and 5, I guess, depending on how it fits better. But we would just recommend that we add in a requirement for nighttime visibility from the hours of sunset to sunrise, that we have a requirement for a white forward-facing light and a red forward-facing light for visibility, excuse me, red rearward-facing light for visibility. And I think that just makes it easier for folks to understand. So with that very long dissertation, I would welcome any questions, comments, feedback, anything else.
Let me start at the end of your explanation. So regarding the headlamp and the tail lamp, you want to insert that between 3 and 4? Is that what you said? On 020?
I don't know that it's terribly important where it goes, but that seems like it's probably a good fit.
Okay. And I know you just recently thought of that, so I think we talked about that at staff meeting this morning.
We could also add it in, I mean, we could add it in under Paragraph 4, for requirements. So we could do like, add it in under, we could make a 4C, make that 4C in that paragraph there, because that would also incorporate it. I don't know that it's terribly important where it goes, as long as we get it described effectively.
Okay.
I can touch base with Mr. Eddington and see if he has a preference, but I think as long as it's listed clearly in there, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Deere.
One of the questions I was asked, the helmet requirement, those standards, are those standards for bicycle helmets, or are those more restrictive like for motorcycle helmets?
Are you talking about the definition of the helmets?
Yeah. And I should have looked it up, I apologize.
Yeah, so those, those are the, let me get that, so the DOT would be a helmet for a motorcycle, and that's not required, but some folks, I mean, that's easy for some families because they already have a motorcycle helmet that they use for other purposes, and so we wanted to include that as allowable, because it would certainly provide a suitable level of protection for a kiddo on an e-bike or a powered scooter. But then the CPSC is the Consumer Product Safety Commission, and those are the folks that regulate helmets for bicycle use. And so we tried to keep that as broad as we could, but make sure that it was a tested helmet that meets the required standards of.
Yeah, the question was primarily addressed to, okay, is a bicycle helmet all right, or do I need to get a motorcycle-grade helmet?
Yep, the bicycle helmet would be approved, and I think that's reasonable, and I think that's best practice across the country in terms of what folks are doing and using. We can't wrap everybody in bubble wrap, but we can make sure that they're making some common sense steps to keep themselves safe.
And this under-16 helmet requirement only applies to e-bikes and e-scooters, not to traditional pedaled bicycles?
That's what we proposed. If you folks have a different perspective on that, we're certainly happy to take that. But I guess from the perspective of our conversations and research, it feels like there's certainly an added element of risk in operating an e-bike or a powered scooter that is not present in operating a human-powered bicycle or a human-powered skateboard, scooter. As police officers, we'd hope that folks would wear helmets for operating a bicycle, a human-powered bicycle, or skateboard, or scooter, but I think the argument is pretty strong for the e-bike and the powered scooter in terms of regulating that. So if you've got other suggestions, I'd certainly be happy to hear them.
One thing I've seen, you have the 2,500 block of West C going east.
You're on dismount zone?
Yeah, dismount. So you've got West C at 25th going east, what about 25th going west, towards the football field and everything out there?
The walking path would end there on that block?
Yeah. Are you talking about the walking path definition?
No, I mean.
Yeah, the walking path.
Yeah, the walking path, you go on east, it starts at 25th and goes to, out to Trail, right?
Uh huh.
Well, what about going from West C, going west over towards the football fields and track fields and baseball fields and everything over that direction? Because there's.
It ends at West C.
There's no walking path that extends past.
I know, but can you make the, make the dismount zone that direction, too?
We could. It would probably be better to define that up in Paragraph 5, it'd be, we'd change that under the dismount zone definition in Paragraph 5 by adding it there. I, I'll be upfront.
The only reason I mention it is because I've seen the guys on scooters come ripping through there going over to AJ's. And then they have the football games over there and the track and the bus depot and...
So if they're on a powered scooter, they could not operate on the sidewalk anyways. So they would be required to operate on the street and follow traffic laws. They would already be prohibited from operating on the sidewalk if it's a powered scooter. The only place they'd be allowed to operate a powered scooter would be on the walking path itself. I'm not sure, I think, I hope that helps.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of a problem it would be for them going west down 25th, but.
But they're on the street there.
We can keep an eye on that.
Well, they're on a street there, but they're also going up towards the middle school over there, too.
Like on East D?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry, West D?
E-E Street, isn't it?
Yep.
Other than that, I don't see any problem with anything else in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Victor.
Chief, under Section 103620, Paragraph 4CI, are you also saying, do you mean to say there that the riding of a Class 2 or 3 electric bike on the Torrington walking path is prohibited, but bikes, human-powered scooters, skateboards, Class 1 electric bikes, and powered scooters are permitted on the rotary walking path?
I goofed, I forgot to take out the rotary.
So you mean the Torrington walking path there?
I do, and I apologize.
Good catch.
Thank you.
And just for my understanding, the rotary walking path is that from 15th out to the golf course?
I think that's, we actually got into a little bit of a discussion as we were putting that together. Rotary has funded a bunch of different sections of it, and a lot of the signage is the rotary walking path, that that's how it's labeled, but there's, I think, a stronger case that it's the Torrington walking path that's funded by Rotary. So we, that was the definition that we, or the title that we ended up working with.
Okay. But for purposes of this ordinance, you're limiting rotary walking path to, as Councilman Victor said, from 15th out to the golf course?
I'm titling, I think it's best to title the whole thing as the Torrington walking path, because it's all-inclusive as the Torrington walking path, but different sections of it have been funded by Rotary.
Okay, so then Section 103610, Paragraph 6, would need to notate that?
Yeah, I, I missed it there.
To just take rotary out, right?
Yeah, it just needs to be.
Just for purposes of the ordinance?
Yeah. You're right. I'm sorry, I thought I used autocorrect or auto-replace more effectively than I actually had. Thank you for that catch.
I was like Councilman Victor, and I thought you were distinguishing a section.
I would prefer, I really appreciate giving those folks credit for the amazing work they've done to develop our walking path, but for the purposes of the ordinance, I think that that would get confusing and difficult for enforcement. So I think it's better from an enforcement and clarity standpoint to just stick with Torrington walking path throughout.
So just a general comment, Mr. Mayor. I know probably some, and probably more parents are going to have some heartburn, some parents are probably going to have a lot of perhaps praise, but this ordinance is what I would call reasonable regulations for a civil society. We have to have some order throughout our city. We don't let cars go without speed limits. We have designated parking zones, we have stop line, stop signs and stoplights and crossing guard, or crosswalks, and that's all a reasonable expectation to traffic, and one should assume that there would come a time where reasonable regulations would come to other forms of transportation. And it's all in an effort for human safety. That is purely the essence of this ordinance is human safety from both motorized traffic and bicycle and other forms of alternative transportation. So, you know, I think I can speak broadly from this governing body standpoint that we're encouraging residents and visitors of the city to utilize those other forms of transportation. But there needs to be a reasonable expectation of what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. We're not trying to prohibit generalized bicycling, generalized e-biking, et cetera. But we need to have safety and order at the top of our mandate, if you will. So I think this is, this is a prime example of reasonable regulations. It's not overly cumbersome, but it does create a environment where safety is paramount, and that's what our goal here is with this ordinance.
I appreciate that comment, and technology advances, okay? And it seems like the law is always running to catch up with the technology, because the law can't keep up with the technology. And we have, in the last several months, especially over the summer months, we're presented, if you're out and about at all, you see this everywhere, you know? I have had kids come out of the alley when I'm driving down the street at a high rate of speed. I've seen kids run the stop signs at a high rate of speed. I've seen kids that aren't any older than 10 with cutoffs and a t-shirt going 30 miles an hour down East M. So, you know, and I don't want any tragedy, I just don't. And, you know, we're, as Mr. Victor points out, we're, by law, we have to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Torrington. So I agree with you that this is a general ordinance. If nobody had invented e-bikes, we wouldn't be sitting here. But they have been invented, and they're constantly changing and getting faster and faster and faster. And it's interesting to see a 10-year-old going 30 miles an hour down the street, okay? When they're four foot eight and they don't have, you know, it's hard for motorists to see them. So I agree with everything you just said, it's a reasonable regulation. We're not trying to, you know, prohibit fun, we're not trying to prohibit the advancement of transportation or anything like that, just apply some reasonable regulation to it. And this is going to take some getting used to. This is somewhat complex, but I think necessarily so, and it's going to take some getting used to by, by your officers chief and the public, like just what, where can you go, where can't you go, what can you do, what can't you do? And again, and as I said in my mayor's informational items, the best solution is to self-govern, okay? And take care, custody, and control of your children and what they're doing out there. Then you're not going to have run-ins with the authorities, so.
As Mr. Estes graciously brought up as part of this discussion, we will need to probably invest in some signage as part of this effort. I mean, if this ordinance is approved, we're going to need to improve our signage for the downtown area, and we're also going to need to improve our signage on the walking path to make sure that folks know what's expected. And I appreciate the comments that both of you have made, and I guess my take on that has been, I don't know if it's within our power to prevent a tragedy from occurring, but I'll sure sleep a lot better at night knowing that we tried really hard to lay out some standards that'll keep kids safe, and I think that's the right thing. some standards that'll keep kids safe and, uh, I think that's the right thing to do.
And, and I just wanna reiterate that point that you've both made. This is about safety of especially children in our community.
Mr. Mayor, we live, uh, in Wyoming, which is a well-known libertarian sort of state. But, uh, as government, uh, we are charged with safety and there's always that fine line of where do you draw the line? How far do we go on protecting people from themselves? You and I grew up with, uh, without wearing seat belts and riding motorcycles without helmets and there's always an argument about that and it, so it's a continual question, but I think as Mr. Victor says, we, this is not crossing that line.
Right, we're up to the line and you said reasonable regulation, I think is the term you used. And I think that's what we're trying to do here, okay? As I agree with you, Chief, I want to be able to say that, to sleep at night thinking we did what we could as the government. Government can't control everything, doesn't want to control everything. That's why self-governing is very important, um, but we wanna do what we can to ensure the safety of our kids in the community. Do you want, Councilman, I'm gonna put Councilman Deal on the spot. He was, was questioning some grammar.
I, I just had a question.
One section.
103620, uh, section four. And I don't know if it is, uh, appropriate, uh, legal terminology and statutes because it, it reads at the beginning, uh, the following practices are forbidden. And every segment after that is, is prohibited. Now, is that just necessary repetition? Are we creating a double negative here?
I'm sorry, you said 1036020, paragraph four?
Yes, paragraph four. Uh, second sentence, the following practices are forbidden. And then the bullet points, A is, is prohibited. And I was just wondering if it might read better if we cross out are forbidden in the introductory paragraph and simply say the following practices for the operator of a bicycle, human powered scooter, skateboard, electric bicycle or powered scooter apply. And then each of the bullet points would be.
Yeah, I could see that. I, I did it, I applied the double because I didn't want there to be any lack of clarity as people read down through the bullets that they would not know that it was prohibited.
Yeah.
Um, but we could certainly say, we could cross out the forbidden and just go with apply.
It's just that old grammarian coming out here.
So we would just get rid of are forbidden and say, in addition to Wyoming statutes, the following practices for the, or the following, maybe we should say the following requirements.
Okay, that would work.
For the operator of a bicycle, human powered scooter, skateboard, electric bicycle or powered scooter, apply. And then go with the colon and move on down with all the other prohibitions. Does that fix it?
Yeah.
Okay. Good suggestion, thank you.
My children would say it's the grouchy old English teacher.
See it, read it. Jim, do you, did you hear that?
Pardon?
Did you hear all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
I'll make those changes. So, so far I've got changes for fixing the misses on the Torrington walking path. Adding in some form on 1036020, the requirement for the forward-facing white light and the rear-facing red light. The, um, changes to paragraph four to clean up the double negative on forbidden, we don't wanna be double forbidden, that's like double secret probation, so we'll, we'll clean that up a little bit. And I think that's all the changes I have so far unless anyone else has anything I'm missing.
Not directly related to the ordinance, but on the signage. So if, if this passes first, second and third readings, um, we're gonna need signage like on the walking path saying what's allowed and what isn't allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Probably downtown in those areas, dismount, uh, most succinctly but clearly stated, right? So we're gonna need a little bit of signage to, I mean, cause notice, and Mr. Eddington knows in law notice is important. Before you're charged with something, you have noticed that you can't do something. So I, I'm glad you brought that up because we are gonna need to put some signage around. And it probably wouldn't hurt at some point, I'm not saying it's the chief's job, but somebody's job, some, probably a school district on their bulletin board to take a look at this and say, here's the rules, kids, and teach that at school.
But our SROs have done quite a bit of outreach for kiddos at the schools and I think we could incorporate, and that's been really well received and we've got a great partnership there, so I'm sure we could incorporate some education for, um, school kids on what works and what doesn't. And frankly, this ordinance will really help clean that up because there was a lot of gray area, um, when we first started tackling this and trying to help kids, um, get some clear direction.
And, and I wanna give kudos to you, Chief Johnson, and to you, Mr. Eddington. I, I believe in never reinventing the wheel if you don't have to, but you had to do some reinvention of the wheel here. Cause there are very few city municipalities that have, have addressed this yet, okay? And so you had a hard time finding something to sort of copy and paste from, is that right?
Yeah, I, I definitely noticed that. I, I mean, I think some of the unique attributes of this are that, um, larger municipalities have addressed this, but they have a much different problem than we have here. Um, I, I mean, if you're in Cheyenne or Casper, very few parents would turn their kiddos loose to go across town on a powered scooter. But in Torrington, we live in an amazing, awesome, safe community where parents feel safe letting their kids go from one end of town to the other and kids feel safe doing that. And that creates a unique set of problems for a community of our size and safety, um, than what other communities have addressed across the state. So, um, we kinda pulled in bits and pieces from a lot of different ordinances and tried to apply common sense, which is shockingly uncommon these days, but, um, it, it feels like we've at least got a reasonable place to start.
And I, I appreciate your joint effort to not have to refer constantly to the state statutes with the Green Statute Book and going through. It, just set it all out here so it's easy for the citizen to understand, it's easier for the court to understand, it's easier for the city attorney to understand, it's easier for the law enforcement personnel to understand, cause it's all contained in one ordinance.
Makes a big difference.
It takes a lot of extra work and I appreciate the extra work that you've put in on this. Right, gentlemen, any further questions for Ms. Mr. Eddington or for Chief Johnson?
I've got one question. On, uh, 103610, number six. Paragraph six, it mentions the rotary walking path from West 15th Avenue from the city limit and the 600 block west of the golf course. Where does the city limit end on that?
15th is, that entire street from City Park to the golf course is annexed.
Okay. I was wondering, cause it, it wasn't, if it wasn't annexed, it didn't have a jurisdiction out there.
Pretty much from the south side of the walking path to the north side of the street is, um, city limits proper and that extends out to the golf course. But anything on the north side of the road or south side of the road, or south side of the walking path basically would not be, um, enforceable.
But the path itself's annexed.
Yes. To my knowledge, so.
Sensing no more questions, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve this ordinance on first reading.
All right, uh, I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve the ordinance set forth in item three on first reading. Obviously with those little connections or little amendments. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Is there any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All, in item number three, all those in favor of approving, uh, the ordinance on first reading as set forth therein signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that ordinance is approved on first reading. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is item number four, Health Insurance Committee Proposal Regarding the 2026 Health Insurance Renewal. And I would call on Clerk Treasurer Lynette Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Health Insurance Committee met with Brian Hillier, our, um, health ed, third-party administrator and health benefit consultant to review our plan for the health insurance. We went through all of the, the plan so far this year, that would be from January 1st through, um, September 30th of 2025, all the claims that have been, been, um, submitted. And, um, it is up slightly, but it's not, um, more than last year. Um, last year, um, the fixed costs were about $4,000 and this year the fixed cost increase is $18,979. So, um, all in all though, I think that's pretty reasonable considering the size of our plan. The reinsurance carrier gave us really good quotes on rates. Um, there is one laser, um, for $80,000, um, for, um, a member, um, that is expected to have high claims this year. That's how they, um, so basically the city would pay the first $80,000 of all claims for this one member. So instead of our, our whole, uh, group insurance going up for this, we're only increasing it for the one member. So that's the beauty of a self-insured, partially self-insured, um, plan. So the committee discussed, you know, um, pros and cons of making changes to the plan. $18,000 of changes really doesn't change the plan a whole lot. And we felt like those changes would be more administrative work than, um, it's really worth. So our, we felt like the health insurance reserve, which is at 1.6 million, could probably handle the $18,000 of the fixed costs. Of course, we have no idea what next year brings with claims and whatnot. But, um, at this time, we felt like the, the health insurance reserve was healthy and it really, um, wasn't worth all the extra administrative costs for $18,000 increase. So, um, the committee would recommend that be no changes to the plan at this time for, um, the city budget or the employees or, um, plan design changes. And then we'd review it again during budget time in May of 2026. I'd be glad to answer any questions or, um, if you guys wanna look at the medical plan review, we, I have that here for you, you guys to look at. It's a very interesting document. I don't know if you have anything to add, Councilman Warren?
No, I've pretty much stated everything that we went over, so.
Just a bit of history, um, I think the city of Torrington has been self-insured, uh, for health insurance for, I think your best estimate, uh, Mrs. Strecker, was 30-plus years.
Yeah, it, it, we've been self-insured since before I came on board 23 years ago, so. And from what I gathered when I started, we had been in it for at, at least 10 years, so.
Now, the way I understand it, the 1.6 million, we pay claims out of that?
Correct.
Just for the heck of it. What would happen if scenario was that, that some catastrophic, something took place and we used up that 1.6 million, then what would transpire after that?
Well, the, the city would have to come up with, um, the money to pay the claims, but we, we insure with the stop-loss carrier or what, what they call in, in the business a reinsurance carrier. So basically we pay the first $45,000 and then once it goes over $45,000, that reinsurance carrier kicks in and pays the claims. So we do have that extra layer of protection. The times that it's happened in the past, and it's, it's been a while since it's happened, probably at least 10, 15 years, is when we had a lot of claims coming from several members and there were a lot of, um, $45,000 payouts. So, but, and at that time, our reserve was much less than it is now. So we have built the reserves through, um, you know, being consistent and staying on top of these claims so that it's, it's been kind of protected. And last year, I think the reserve was at 1.69. So we're only, um, about $70,000, $70,000 less than what we had this time last year. So it's staying pretty steady at this point. So, um, you know, with a hope and a prayer that our claims stay consistent, um, we do have to account for medical inflation, we gotta keep that in mind. But at this point, we, we feel like our, our plan's pretty healthy.
Just from re, reviewing your report and hearing you answer the questions, Mrs. Strecker, appears have, this, I mean, no one knows what the future holds, but right now it appears like it's a healthy, it, it's in a healthy state, this fund.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, any further questions for Mrs. Strecker on the Health Insurance Committee Proposal? All right, if no further questions for Mrs. Strecker, I would consider a motion, uh, for council to accept the Health Insurance Committee Proposal set forth in item four.
I would so move to accept the Health Insurance Committee Proposal as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin, an item four, to accept the Health Insurance Committee Proposal as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, item number four, all those in favor of accepting the Health Insurance Committee Proposal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that Health Insurance Committee Proposal is accepted. Thank you, Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Warren. All right, next page on the agenda, we are on approval of the bills from 102225 to 11425. And as usual, we have the bills attached to your agenda and then a separate set that was delivered to you by Mrs. Strecker this evening. And with that introduction, I would call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd be glad to answer any questions on either set of bills.
I have one question. On the first, first bunch, on page two, under Cummins Incorporated, about the fourth one from the bottom, there's a, there's an invoice number 251074484 for the amount of 77295.
Mm-hmm.
And then on page two of the next set, under Cummins, there's the same invoice for the same amount. Are those two different things?
On the second set?
Yeah, on the second set, page two. Cummins, it's the second one down from the top.
I don't know, I'll have to check into that. We're not gonna pay it twice, obviously.
Are you sure you're looking at? Oh, I see, okay.
Same invoice number, same exact amount anyway.
You're right.
It is a different. It is a different GL account, yeah.
But they're both ambulance, though.
Okay. I think what is... What had happened here is Darren wanted it coded to 700 instead of 300. And that was after this list already went out. So, I think it was just a change in the coding. But I will make sure, and it's not in there twice, to be paid.
Okay. Good catch, Councilman Kelly.
The only question I had.
I did want to point out that there is an invoice in there for the transformer on the second set, the one I handed out tonight, that Dana emailed. And that's on page five, Southern Public Power District.
I see Dana here. Did you want to explain that a little bit, or do you want Dana to come up and...
I sent out the email to all the folks.
Okay.
If there's further discussion, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for reminding me that you did indeed do that. You sent an email to all the...
That was prior to the one, so I can answer any questions.
I think the testing came out pretty good. So, we're going to go forward with that purchase. There is two small things that... Or there may be some small things that we need to correct, but they won't amount to a whole lot, so...
Testing agency that we've used for 40 years went to Grand Island and performed a test. There's a couple bushings that might be replaced, early in repairs. And they thought it would be an excellent purchase for the price. It's a 2007 model. It's 18 years old. It's a 3014 conversion myself, and it's out of service. They didn't take it out of service. The main issue is just that their converting group is taking all those transformers out of service and selling them. You got it for $37,000, which a brand-new transformer for that. Electrotest of maintenance said it'd be an excellent purchase, of course.
Councilman Victorin?
I have a question for you, Dana. What would the expected life of that transformer be in years?
That's a crystal ball shake. We have a substation transformer in service right now that was from the 60s. So, for the one that failed, that's only about 30, 40 years old. You know, that's... They recommend, you know, they say, oh, 20-year lifespan. Well, this one, which we haven't had that issue before. Which, you know, the two large substations, Curvis and 28, they're bigger transformers. They're a brand-new one. One of those would be about closer to $100,000.
One other follow-up question, Mr. Mayor. Does Southern Power have more to sell?
Actually, I got one of the last two they had from this size. They're keeping one for a backup until they do their converting group. Riehner Darié and Chimy Rock are in.
Another advantage that I keep telling you is it's this time of the year that we're doing this, and not in the middle of summer.
Yeah, and if this would have happened in the middle of summer, it would have been tough to carry some loads. We had to move loads around between substations. Middle of summer, it would have been really rough. Right now, loads are low, much lower than summer time. So, the time of year that this happened happened at a good time. It's sort of light.
And so far, so good. You had that company that you've worked with for 40 years that inspected this and approved it, and...
As soon as we get in here, we're going to schedule the cut-down. And we've got RC Crane, out of Scotts Club, going to go pick it up as soon as the check gets in Grand Island's hands. We're going to go down, pick it up, bring it home, give it a good pat for where the oil leaves are. Electrotest will come, do the minor repairs. That way, they can see if there's any sewage, if there's a little more they have to do. Looks like possibly a couple of bushing replacements is about all there is. So, it's a real shame for the event, so...
All right, thank you, Dana. Go ahead.
Do we perform the install, or does that...
Yeah, people do that. As far as they're going to come, and you, the, you know, if... RC will get the old transformer off, put it on Timbers, take the new one, put it on pad. Once it's tested, everything, you want to hook up on it. Do the old ones testing after we energize it, make sure it ties with everything else. Other than that, yeah, that's that's another issue. And now, as far as repairing the other one, that might be an issue. I've already had a frustrated transformer rep. Talked with a company that does repairs. They recommended replacement rather than repair. I talked with Electrotest. They said I would check with a couple other companies first, you know, before just having mine made up to replace. Jerry's Electric, who we buy our distribution transformers from, they have a facility in Coleman, South Dakota. They can do the rewinding, oil fill, ore testing. And maybe provide a quote, whatever it takes. You know, if that quote is going to be... Last week, we probably would be able to get a replacement.
Thank you, Dana.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no more questions about the bills, I would like a motion to pay the bills as presented.
All right, we are on item number five. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly, an item five, to approve and pay the bills as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. Item number five, all those in favor of approval of the bills as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills in item five are approved. All right, we are now on public comment time. And I see Fire Chief Luis Correa here. Would you give us a report, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's picked up a little bit for us. This is kind of our busy time of the year. We've gone on... One of our calls was a residential fire alarm. Our Tower One was mutilated in Fort Laramie to help with a structure fire that they had in in their town. We had a call for for a resident burning trash in a fire pit, which is not allowed in city limits. I I believe they were not originally from Torrington, so we we informed them that that is not allowed. We ran on a call for Eastern Hall. We had a cooking incident with one of the students burning burning their dinner. We ran on a on a motor vehicle, a car on fire at the care center. We also ran on a on a fire alarm at one of the local hotels. Wire had been cut on that. And then, well, the time... From the time I got off of work to to the time I got here, we actually had two fire calls. We had a grass fire that we were able to get put out. And then, unfortunately for Mr. Holly back there, one of his dumpsters was lit on fire again, so... I believe that was put out. But he'll have some cleanup to do, I'm sure. As far as calls go, that's that's all we got. We, as far as community engagements, trunk-or-treat was a was a great success. I'd like to say thank you to everybody that was involved in helping out with that. Again, like I said, it was a great, great turnout, great success. Couple of things that we have coming up are the annual Christmas parade. And then, of course, we will be chauffeuring Santa Claus to some of the local schools and daycare centers.
Can you tell us how many kids you think went through trunk-or-treat?
You know, I I was talking with a little bit with Chief Johnson, over 1,000 people, I believe.
Kids?
Kids, yeah, that they that they were able to to hand out. I know the local... One of the local churches, and I was going to look it up and see which one it was. They provided 600 9-volt batteries for dispersing. And I'd guess we had maybe 25 of them left, so it was a...
That's for smoke alarms, right?
Yeah, that's that's for smoke alarms, yep. Like I said, I can't remember what church it is, but it's it's an annual thing for them. I think they had a scheduling conflict for the person that normally hands them out for them, so they asked the fire department to put them out. As far as smoke detectors themselves, I know we passed out one on our end. I think the numbers were down, but we're always willing to to give those those smoke detectors out.
I think Chief Johnson was saying about 2.5 people per kid. So, take that 1,000 and multiply by 2.5, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Mutative.
It was it was quite a few, yeah. There was there were somewheres mom, dad, grandpa, grandma, so...
I think it was a good turnout. There were a lot of kids this year.
It was...
Parents that took advantage.
It was a great turnout. And then I had the privilege of going out a little bit later. And all over by Ridge Road, there was quite a few, quite a few kids still trick-or-treating out out in the community, so that that area seems to get a little bit more foot traffic on Halloween, so...
Well, I... On behalf of myself and council, I appreciate the fire department and the PD being involved in that, and the private businesses that did the trunk-or-treat, and Gogoshun, and all those people who are involved in doing that. So, I think it's a great event that increases in popularity each year.
Yeah, it's it seems to seems to be that way. And yeah, any any chance we can get out and and especially have encounters with our youth and getting them getting out and them seeing us and seeing that we're just normal, everyday people out, you know, when we're when we're not all geared up, it could be a scary, scary sight for some kids to...
Good recruit... Good recruitment tool, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's it seems to work out. I hear that we're going to hopefully start a countywide youth program. And from the kids that are kind of getting involved with it, I think they had to cap it off at about 20, 20 participants that'll go through this first one. And they had plenty of other people interested, but I think they were going to try with 20, see how it goes. Like I said, that's a countywide thing, so... I don't have a whole lot of information on that right now, but hopefully, sometime soon, we'll have a get some of our youth trained up. I think most most of it will be on the wildland side, but it's very promising with our volunteer numbers down to to see that there's such an interest from our youth.
Good, I'm happy to hear that.
One question, Mr. Mayor. These dumpster fires, are you finding them to be deliberate or spontaneous?
You know, I... The majority of them that we go to, it's it's usually a deliberate thing. You know, I know one, it was just some kids that got their hands on a lighter, and things got escalated quickly. But yeah, I'm not 100% sure it's... You you do get some spontaneous combustion with with landfills and stuff, and especially people throwing away lithium batteries. But you don't think it's necessarily the case with the dumpsters themselves.
Or as winter progresses, hot coals or hot ashes in there. Don't do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's for sure, yep.
Were you satisfied with the way that that truck worked over in Fort Laramie for the bending the roof and stuff?
Yeah, yeah. I I was out of town. I was actually at a water conference for for my full-time job. But yeah, our one of our my division chiefs, Michael Schuler, he was able to get up there, and they were able to to ventilate the roof from the platform itself. So, that's that's nice that you don't get a person up on the roof for potentially to give out and them drop down. So, yeah, it worked out, worked out good. With that being said, I I think it would probably be in our best interest if we did train with with other people that we'd potentially be mutilating for as far as placement. With a truck that size, of course, it takes up a lot of room. And and they they pull up, you know. With us, we know that leave room for that for that apparatus, and we kind of know what to look for. Like I said, we we probably could benefit. I know we would benefit if we trained a little bit more in other towns in Goshen County, just just for that, so that they're aware and and we can get a little bit better placement. But yeah, from what I understand, it was good placement. They were able to do do what they needed to do from the safety of the platform.
Especially now, since a lot of these houses are getting tin roofs.
Yeah, tin roofs and and just it's it's not the legacy construction that we've had in the past. And it's just the the amount of time it takes for a structure to become fully involved is a lot less.
Good ques... Good question. That's nice to see that the equipment is helpful.
Yeah, it's been it's been nice. Thankfully, we're getting her out and getting in there. I've heard a couple of people say it's just a parade truck, but now we have proof that it's not just a parade truck.
That's good. Good question, Councilman Kelly. Good answer, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we are in public comment section. Is there any public comment? I have Mr. Ed Hawley approaching the podium.
Mayor and Council, I just want to kind of thank the citizens that participated in the composting of the grass. It was the cleanest this bin since I've been here, and it turned out pretty well. I'm going to pick up the bins on the 17th. Right now, we're allowing leaves, and I got an area for the leaves, which helps keep a lot of it out of our landfill, so...
I appreciate you mentioning that, Ed, because that's been an issue in the past with with bags left in there and other things, right?
Bags, pop bottles, yeah, starters, you name it, motor oil, so...
Keep your grass clippings clean, and then they're useful to us, right?
Yep, so...
Thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate that.
And then, since Veterans Day falls on a Tuesday, we will pick up Tuesday's residential on Monday. And then Wednesday, we'll be back to normal.
Okay, thank you for that heads up, too.
All right, so, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment, Councilman? Do you have any comments?
I just would would encourage, I think that would be important, to get out on social media and maybe our new texting service of that trash change.
I got it scheduled for tomorrow morning, or tomorrow sometime.
All right.
Because I know I'll forget, and I'm on Tuesday. Because I know I'll forget, and I'm on Tuesday.
Good point. All right. Any comments? Seeing none, we are done with public comment section, and we do have an executive session, item number seven, so I would entertain a motion for council to leave regular session and enter into executive session.
I would move to adjourn into executive session for discussion of personnel.
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. All those in favor of adjourned into executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we will go into executive session. Thank you, everybody.